First item on the work session agenda is a pledge of allegiance by students from Walter M. Senko.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, young man. Good job. The second item on the work session agenda is a What We Love About Stonehurst presentation by Dr. Sherri Wallace, principal of Stonehurst Elementary School.
Good evening, school board members, central office staff, parents, students, and community members. I am Dr. Sherri Wallace, the proud first-year principal of Stonehurst Hills Elementary School, and this is my wonderful lead teacher, Elizabeth Terrell. As we thought about what to highlight about our school, we felt it important to express what we as a community love about our school. There are so many positive things that occur daily. Please enjoy watching our students, parents, and staff identifying what we love about Stonehurst.
I love 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 Stonehurst.
What I love about Stonehurst is my classmates.
The eager students that are willing to learn.
They're nice people with kind hearts.
And I love seeing my students actively, positively engage with one another.
Everybody gets along with each other.
What I love about Stonehurst is that we get to have recess and we get to play around with our friends.
I meet all of my friends and play with them all the time.
What I love about Stonehurst is my teacher, Ms. Egan.
My teacher, Ms. Lydon.
My teacher, Ms. Wormy.
I love every teacher that's in this school.
All the teachers and all the staff.
Everybody makes it fun for us here.
I have the best teachers that I could possibly have in 1st grade.
The teachers are very kind, caring, and respectful.
The teachers don't have favorites and they treat each other's students nicely.
What I love about Stonehurst is they take their time and they help your child with their weakness.
The teachers are always helping with stuff I don't know.
They help me so much.
I love my teacher.
The one thing I love about Stonehurst Hills is all the rules in this school.
That first of all, keep Stonehurst safe.
I love the zero tolerance with misbehavior.
My grandson Dylan has been improving in his work, his attitude.
We worked together, me and the teachers and the staff, to get him back on track. He made Student of the Month in October for his class this year. He's doing great.
What I love about Stonehurst is all the relationships I've made.
The memories that we create and share together.
We're a huge family that just loves each other till the end.
It's just so nice to be part of a team that supports one another.
What I love about Stonehurst is everything.
That's why I always think of Stonehurst as my favorite school.
I can't wait to go to Stonehurst.
I really appreciate Stonehurst and that's the reason I love you guys.
And that's what I love about Stonehurst.
And that's what I love about Stonehurst.
That's what I love about Stonehurst.
And that's what I love about Stonehurst.
And that's what I love about Stonehurst.
And that's what I love about Stonehurst.
That's what I love about Stonehurst!
And that's why I love Stonehurst. Bye!
We love our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. That was excellent. The third item on the work session agenda is a Providing Opportunities, Upholding Unity, and Striving for Excellence presentation by Ms. Kamisha Simpson, principal of Walter M. Senko Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. McGary, Mr. President, school board members, and Upper Darby community. My name is Kamisha Simpson, and I have the honor of being the principal at Walter M. Senko Elementary School. My goal throughout this presentation is to capture the many ways that our school provides students with opportunities, upholds excellence, and strives for unity. As a school leader, my mission is to overcome Senko's largest barrier of being out of the school district boundaries. To overcome this geographic barrier, Senko holds monthly meetings within the community at the Upper Darby Municipal Library. We organize home visits within the community, and we provide transportation to school events. At this time, Lamine Silla, Senko's 5th grade class president, will express from a student's perspective the meaning of opportunity, unity, and excellence.
Hello, everyone. I am Lamine Silla, an 11-year-old 5th grade student of Walter M. Senko. Now, as a student within this undoubtedly amazing district, I'd like to say a few things of which not only my school is teaching me, but what the entirety of the Upper Darby School District is teaching all students. As you may or may not know, our new motto for this district is simply the words, "Opportunity, Unity, and Excellence." Now, I feel as if this motto fits Upper Darby perfectly, and here are my reasons. First off, we were taught about the importance of working hard in order to achieve your goals here in Upper Darby, but going into depth with this topic, working hard is not just pushing your boundaries by the tiniest bit in order to get where you need to be, but it is rather going above and beyond, pushing your limits. It's when you truly believe you can make it and really want to make something out of your education. If you are a really motivated and driven student, you would grasp any opportunity that would lead to a better future for you. Emphasize the word "opportunity." Opportunity is what this district wants you to have. This is what the Upper Darby School District is trying to teach, is trying to get all students to prioritize. Now, as my next example, I'd like to say that the Upper Darby School District is incomprehensibly good in making things that bring students together. We've just held the gala not too long ago, and of course, there's still more to come in the future. Also ironically at Senko, in the next couple of weeks, we're having multiple events. We're having a diversity door contest, as well as a census poster contest, and we are currently celebrating Black History Month. Along with that, anyone who supports any cause will not be discriminated against because this district is glad to take in anyone of any race or people who think a certain way on specific topics and teach them no matter what. This is how the district and the students within it show unity. Now, excellence is the thing that will truly get you to your end goal. When you display excellence, it means you are presumably working hard and showing that you can handle most things thrown at you in class. It's when you are not giving up when something may seem too difficult, yet still trying. When you try hard and focus on work to truly put your education to good use, it all just ties up with this whole motto. Unity will lead to excellence, excellence will lead to opportunity, and opportunity leads to a better future for you and your peers. This is why it's such a big thing for you to take in all this stuff that your school is trying to bestow so it affects you positively later in life rather than it being disregarded and it later having some repercussions. This is what's going to get us where we want to be and the thing that leads you to success as long as you try. Thank you for having me here and for your attention.
Young man, young man, young man. You epitomize what our district is all about. You have a very bright future. I mean, I took notes while you was making your speech. Your vocabulary is incomprehensible. You tied together our entire motto, and if you wrote that speech, you have a very, very bright future. I'm gonna need your business card. You probably don't even know what that is yet, but I'm gonna need your business card. You probably should get some made up, so. Great job, great job. Dr. Wallace and Ms. Simpson, you guys did a great job. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. So there's just another part.
Yes.
Thank you to Jason Taylor for developing the video that will now highlight the many ways that we overcome any barriers to provide students with comprehensive, rigorous, and engaging experiences at Senko.
An opportunity is something that you can do. You don't have to do it.
And taking that chance would lead to bigger things that could really help your future.
We need jackets to protect ourselves. It's not only for fashion wearing, it's for survival.
So we went downstairs to the cafeteria and it was like, wait, what's happening? There were people there figuring out people's sizes, and you get to like try on the colors that you wanted, and it was more of like a customizable thing, so like whatever you really wanted, they would get for you. The people who were giving us our coats were very warm and like they seemed happy to be there.
It's their opportunity to make us warm, and I felt good in it, and I'm glad I didn't have to waste money on it.
Science Explorers is an opportunity for you to learn more science. This part of the Science Explorers is pop, bang, fizz, so it's like how particles and other things react to each other and work with each other.
The Science Explorers assembly was really, really cool because when we came down, we weren't sure what was happening, but once we saw the experiments, we were really amazed by them.
I learned that not all experiments are dangerous. You can even do experiments at home.
So Ms. Simpson came to me and she asked me if my class wanted to participate in a partnership with a school in Ghana and write letters back and forth, and I immediately said, absolutely.
It's fun to know about other countries, how they live.
I was kind of nervous because I didn't know what to write to them, so then she sort of gave us some helping, told us some ideas what to write.
Our introduction letter was just, you know, talking a little bit about our school.
We shared how our school looks like and what we do in the school.
And we sent it over to them, and then within a couple of weeks, we had one back. So we've just been corresponding back and forth since then. We're so multicultural here, but they're getting to see what things are like in a school in Africa, so it's really special for them.
I thought they would be kind of different, but they're actually kind of alike. The stuff we do, they do it too.
You know what I mean? It means that people come together.
To accomplish bigger things that nobody can accomplish alone.
So ice cream social is downstairs in the cafeteria. The kids get to find out what teacher you have, and you get to meet your friends and eat ice cream. And you get markers and books that you got to take for free. All the teachers and all the students are like in a big group, and it's like a big person. Like in the cartoons, there's two people and they become this one big person. That's how it was like.
The Taste of Thanksgiving is like a mini Thanksgiving in school to show you what like the actual Thanksgiving is kind of like, so we did like a lot of crafts in school.
You get to weave your own placemat, and you get to get it laminated, so when you go downstairs, you have a placemat.
We went downstairs to taste the Thanksgiving food.
The food was actually really good.
It was cornbread, pie.
Cranberries.
And there was stuffing. You have like a big feast with your family and stuff.
You get to go downstairs, talk to everybody, eat good food, and just have fun.
Excellence is when you do something perfect.
To me, it's a rank of greatness.
But it's not all about like getting awards. It matters about what you do and what you feel.
Student Council is like, you have to do this essay, and if you get selected, then you're basically a role model for our school. The assembly was about like actually like showing that you're in Student Council now, like you're an official member. The class president, Lamine, he gave a speech, and then Ms. Simpson, she started calling all our names, and then we got our certificate for being in Student Council. Now I'm officially in Student Council and like I'm a role model for our school, and like I'm showing what's right and what's wrong, so it feels nice.
For the winter concert, we perform it once at the school for the other kids, and then later that day, we usually go to Beverly Hills, and we perform it again for the parents and families.
There was a very big stage, and it felt like we were like real performers and that we were like performing for a large audience.
Once you start singing up there with your friends, it feels like you really belong there because you have family watching, you're not singing alone, there's nothing to be scared about.
The fact that you put in all this work to get here.
That leads to a rank of greatness, or in this, or in this case, excellence.
A Student of the Month Assembly is when people get choose, and then they get this large paper, and then it says that they're Student of the Month.
There's a theme, and if you follow that theme, you get picked.
So this month, it's kindness. Last month, it was citizenship. And you're gonna get chosen if you're the one who shows the most of that.
It's very fun. They take a picture of you, they have a raffle thing, and then they spin it around, and then if they pick your name, you get to do a fun game, and it's very fun.
You hear everybody just chanting and clapping for you, so when you go up there, you feel really proud of yourself for accomplishing that.
Senko is a good school. Make sure you follow the rules and be good in the school, and you'll get something good.
Thank you.
So it was quite clear, we have a very special district. Every month, we feature different elementary schools or our middle schools or our high school, and that's just spectacular stuff, so. Dr. Wallace and Ms. Simpson, you guys are doing a fantastic job. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for the children in our district. Thank you. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School Board, School District, Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session on January 14, 2020, from 9:00 AM to 9:45 PM for personnel matters, and this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:25 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel litigation matters. Roll call, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague.
Here.
Here. Here.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Ms. Dawes. Mr. Fields.
Here.
Ms. Curry.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of January 14, 2020, and the special meetings of January 21 and January 28, 2020 are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please. Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Ms. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the report of the secretary, Mrs. Curry, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please. Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Ms. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Motion carried. Reporter of the treasurer, please. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. The report of the sec-- I'm sorry, the report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please. Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Mr. Neal.
Aye.
Ms. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Motion carries. And now we will have our fantastic student representative report. No pressure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start this report, I just want to say that to the young man that gave the speech from Senko, I'm an alumni from there, and every day, kids like you make me proud that I'm an alumni from there.
I have a feeling he'll be sitting up there one day.
I hope so. So carrying on, last month, Karen and I gave, spoke about new procedures at UDHS regarding school sporting events. We wanted to share the thoughts and opinions of our fellow classmates and staff in this building with the Board of School Directors and community members. Most of the individuals were interviewed and understand that the new building procedures are appreciated, rational for the decision.
While most agree with the new procedures, some student athletes did express concern over making sure that their family and friends have access to our student club. We will continue to provide updates on the procedures. We appreciate the school and administration encouraging the feedback and taking our comments into consideration when making decisions.
We still encourage you to come to speak up, where we will talk about and address ongoing topics that will impact the school and community. This will be held on February 20 at the Upper Darby High School at 7:00 PM.
Thank you to the Upper Darby School District Board of Directors and Administration for allowing us to provide the monthly report. We will continue to serve the board and community and share the joyous views and prideful happenings across the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Great job. Can we give them a round of applause? Lamine and Karen always do a great job. Thank you. The budget of personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. And now we will have a presentation by Dr. Counsel, our Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Equity.
So good evening, President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, and members of the community. I was gonna start off by saying in the absence of our superintendent, but as you can see, it takes a lot for our superintendent not to make a board meeting, so. So we welcome you here, Dr. McGary. This evening, Dr. McGary and Dr. Manfree attended the Clifton Heights Planning Commission meeting regarding our land development application. We are continuing to work with the Clifton Heights Borough Council as we move forward with our plans to build a new middle school and ease overcrowding. The following video is part of the presentation that Dr. McGary will present, or presented to the Clifton Heights Borough Council this evening. As this video demonstrates, providing opportunity, unity, and excellence for all of our students is imperative as we strive to meet the students' needs. To that end, I will use this time to recognize several students who continue to excel in our athletic programs. First, I'd like to bring to the podium a 2nd grade student from Primus Elementary School who placed 3rd in the 400-meter dash at the 46th Annual Colgate Women's Games in New York City. She also received a college grant of $250. Please join me as we celebrate Casey Gordon. Good job, Casey. Next, we would like to recognize Upper Darby's 4x400 relay team. This team crushed the competition and took first place at the Ocean Breeze Invitational. Please join me as we celebrate Sidney Turner. Aaron Williams. Shawn Maxwell. And George O'Kine. Congratulations. Next, we want to recognize the 4x200 relay team that also took first place at the Delco Indoor Championships. Please join me as we celebrate Aaron Williams again. Aaron. Darlene Tim Brooks. George O'Kine. And Makai Mayo. Again, congratulations. On another positive note, I just received information that the 5th Annual Regional High School Art Exhibition will feature artwork created by students from high schools in Delaware and Chester Counties. We will have a total of eight entries in the show, and a special award will be presented to Sky Lawrence for her piece titled Curl Undefined. We also, we're also proud to announce that Junior Rachel Holman and Senior Daniel Eep have advanced to the PMEA Regional 6 Chorus. We will recognize and celebrate these students at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you again to all of our students who continue to demonstrate excellence in their endeavors. President Brown, this concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Counsel. We will now have an update on the January 28, 2020 Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Mitchell will read the summary.
Thank you. The Education and People's Services Committee met on Tuesday, January 28 at 7:00. A detailed summary of the agenda is posted on Board Docs, so I'll just give a little brief overview. We had three agenda items. The first was the Upper Darby School District Brand Ambassadors. It was informational. Ms. Buford provided an overview of the District, the Upper Darby School District Brand Ambassadors Initiative and discussed our next steps in development. This is part of our branding campaign. Number two was our 2020-2021 school year calendar, and tonight, that is in the Instruction and Curriculum Report for Board Action. Number three was the delayed school start times for adolescents. It was informational. Mr. Marshallak reviewed the delayed school start times report from the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the Joint State Government Commission Report, which is posted on our website. We are having several forums on this to discuss community input, to see where we will go with this, if anywhere. There was no public comments that night, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. We will now have an update on the January 28, 2020 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Dr. Hague will read the summary.
The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, January 28 at 6:00 PM. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs. There were two items in the, from the meeting. Both were informational. The first was an update on the first-ever vendor fair, the, which was held at Upper Darby High School on January 17, 2020. The reportable items included the total number of vendors participating, the number of local women-owned, minority-owned vendors participating, and the comments that were shared by participants at the event. And this item correlated to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. The second item was the report on the annual water testing. The administration provided an update as it related to the district's water testing analysis and current reporting requirements established under Act 39 of 2018. The water testing was performed at all district facilities, 65 total samples in January 2020, and the result was recently made available to the administration. This also correlates to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. There were no public comments on either of these items, and I would just add that while all of the lead and copper levels were below the EPA guidelines, the administration also added that they are striving to get all of those levels zero or as close to zero as we possibly can.
Thank you for adding that, and thank you for reading the summary, Dr. Hague. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Mrs. Curry.
Thank you, President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Poll vote, please. Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers.
Aye.
Mr. War Savage.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Ms. Dawes.
Aye.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Ms. Curry.
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye. Motion carries. The Personnel Report, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board?
Yes. I would like to acknowledge our 10 retirees, and we wish you a healthy and enjoyable retirement. There are some pretty special people on this list, and they will be missed as part of the Upper Darby family.
Any other comments from the board? Dr. McGary, I think you have a comment.
Yes, I echo Vice President Mitchell's comments, and in particular, it's important to highlight very, very, very important influential members that retire, historical members, and one in particular is actually number one on this list, from Westbrook Park, Patty Cleveland. When RTI responds to intervention, responds to instruction intervention was a big topic on a national level, and not to mention in this school district, Upper Darby. Patty Cleveland, as a reading teacher and a teacher in the school district, I would say venture to say, if not single-handedly, really put us on the map as a teacher driving that home and being a teacher at Drexel Middle School and being a building principal in the school district at an elementary level. She is one of the most influential top educators that we've had in this school district, and she will be truly, truly missed. The history, the knowledge, and the professionals that she's brought to this organization is second to none. So I just wanted, on a personal level, to acknowledge Patty Cleveland and what she's done for this school district. She's been phenomenal.
The one thing that stuck out that stuck out to me in looking at the list of retirees is the longevity that some of them have. 1974, they started in our district, 1977, 1985, so that's a long time, and that's certainly longer than our student representatives have even been with us, so, you know, they all will leave a legacy of excellence, and we thank them for their service. Any other comments from the board? Provo please, Mr. Rogers. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, provo please, thank you.
Dr. Hague?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers? Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Dawes? Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye, motion carries. Policy Reports, Mr. Des Noiers.
The Policy Report, there are three policies for first reading. They are in the hands of the board members and have been made available to the public. I move for their doc, I move for the Policy Reports adoption.
This is just the first reading, so we're not voting on...
Oh, this is first reading, sorry, sorry. This is just the first reading, it's informational. The changes in the policies, a summary of the changes is as follows. Policy 233, Suspension and Expulsion. This policy is being updated to reflect the new Pennsylvania compulsory school age. Beginning with the start of the 2020-2021 school year, students will be required to attend school while they were while they are under the age of 18. At present, students are required to attend school while they are under the age of 17, so the change to this policy is simply to reflect the the one additional year of education required. The other two policies, 610, Purchases Subject to Bid Quotation and 611, Purchases Budgeted, are being changed to update the amounts subject to bid quotation, and that is a legally mandated change.
Thank you very much, Mr. Des Noiers. The Facilities and Use of Facilities Report, Mr. Fields.
The Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Provo please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Dawes?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye, motion carries. The Finance and Budget Report, Dr. Hague.
The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Provo please, Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague?
Aye.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Aye.
Mr. War Savage?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Ms. Dawes?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curry?
Aye.
Ms. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye, motion carries. And now we'll talk about our collateral assignment reports. We will start with the Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Curry, do you have anything for us?
Good evening. The Delaware County Community College Liaison Board has reached out, and my first meeting will be April 1, and the president of DCCC has also provided the liaisons with a clear report of what is happening with the property on Garrett and Lansdowne, so I'm sure I'll have something to report after that April 1 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Curry. The DC IU Board, Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Delaware County Intermediate IU Board met on February 5. We had various approvals that we approved, education support, community partners for the Rose Tree Media School District and Radner, approval to support professional development opportunities for the IU and district staff. This includes non-public school teachers for different professional development. We approved grant, they approved some grants and two new board members, including myself and a board member from Springfield School District. The next was we approved to enhance student learning and work experiences through our future educators, and I think these are the things that I really would like to highlight tonight. There'll be an additional medical careers program beginning for the 2020-2021 school year. We're transitioning the Apple Program currently under under operating under CIP 15.12012 Management Information Systems, operating under CIP 52.1201 beginning the 2021 school year, so that is a big update to our information technology. We approved a total of 83 cosmetology students from the Aston and Fallcroft campuses and 12 adults to attend the International Beauty Show in New York City on March 10. We are sending 14 students and two adults to the Family Career and Community Leaders of America State Conference and State College from March 30 to April 1. And they approved 40, sorry, 30 welding students and two adults to attend a field trip to the Mid-Atlantic Steel in Newcastle, Delaware to expose students to summer work and co-op opportunities. So there is a big focus on CTE. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell. Legislative Counsel, Mr. Fields.
Mr. Fields and I are actually splitting this tonight.
Okay.
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. So the Legislative Council met last month. We meet again tomorrow morning at 7:30. We will be going over Governor Wolf's budget, which includes $100 million increase for basic education funding and $25 million increase in special education funding, $25 million increase in pre-K counts, $5 million increase in Head Start, $11 million increase in the preschool and early intervention. Just of note, Governor Wolf's budget could include more money for Upper Darby School District if we pass, if they pass comprehensive charter reform, and Don is going to talk about that.
Last August, Governor Wolf announced plans for a comprehensive charter school reform package. This year, he called for those changes. There's a number of changes in that package. I'll describe a few of them in a moment. This year, he asked for support in this to this goal for, he asked for legislation to be introduced in both the State Senate and State House, and that this legislation would focus on transparency, performance, better performance outcomes, and better and more appropriate funding. In response, a proposal has been introduced, House is going to be introduced, House Bill 2261 and Senate Bill 1024. They're going to be introduced. If you're the kind of person that goes to the state website and looks up these bills, they're not there yet, but they will be. This legislation contains changes like require any company running a cyber charter school to open up their records, establish a statewide data-driven cyber charter school tuition rate, create a standard state framework for charter school applications. If there's anybody here who witnessed the charter school application from last year, I know some of the admins remember. There were a lot of discrepancies that made it obvious that they it wasn't a very good application, so this standardizes that process, so people don't have to spend a lot of, not a lot of extra time, because I don't have extra time, but a lot of time reviewing these applications that are basically some basically bogus applications. Stop the creation of new cyber charter schools until the existing schools improve performance and require PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, to create enrollment and performance standards. Stanford University came out with a study, it was in the paper a few weeks ago, talking about how these cyber schools, cyber charter schools in Pennsylvania are just really underperforming. So a lot of these are packaged in that bill, and in response, we're going to have a resolution calling for this charter school funding reform. Do I start that now? Under New Business. Okay, and that's 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 the big thing from the from the coming out of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Fields, for your report on the Legislative Counsel. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, do you have anything? I don't know if you guys met yet, no? Okay. Home and School, Mr. War Savage, I think you did have a meeting that you talked that you was very excited about, so.
Yes, so last Tuesday, we had a Home and School Board Presidents' Meeting at Aronamick Elementary School. It was chaired by Dr. McGary, other people in attendance included myself, Ms. Buford, did I pronounce your name correctly? Excellent. And a majority of the other school or school board, Home and School Presidents in the district. We basically covered everything that we like sharing with the community in terms of the agendas that we set in the normal board meetings as well as the committee meetings. One topic of discussion in particular that really kind of touched on multiple points that we've been talking about when it comes to lead in some of the water or testing for lead in the water, thankfully that we're under recommended guidelines, but the but we can always do better. There was one Home and School Association that was interested actually in seeing the viability of having those filtered water filtered water bottle facilities placed in one of the schools, and that started a conversation of, well, we also had a fundraiser person exclaimed that they had a fundraiser that they were interested in engaging with water bottles, and then that led to talking about branding and opportunity of spreading, speaking to our goal of wanting to do something with the branding initiative, and it was just a really spontaneous fruitful discussion.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. War Savage. Let's see, PSBA, did you did you have something, Mrs. Curry? I think you...
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that I am honored to be appointed to the 2020 PSBA Platform Committee, and that Platform Committee will be working on platform issues that will be brought to the floor in the 2020 PSBA Conference that usually takes place in Hershey, PA. So I will be a part of that committee representing Upper Darby School District. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for representing us. The Policy Committee, Mr. Des Noiers, I know you gave a report earlier, do you have any anything else you want to add?
I don't have any other updates, thank you.
Okay. Communications, Mrs. Mitchell and Mr. Neil, do you have any nothing to report?
Really nothing, except I just want to make sure that everyone's receiving the monthly updates and remind the community that you can also sign up to receive those.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're moving on to Old Business.
Sure. We have Old Business, the Act 34. The Board acknowledges receipt of the Act 34 materials for the Aronamick Elementary School renovation and addition project consisting of the transcript, the proof of publication, and other exhibits from the Act 34 hearing of January 7, 2020, together with the correspondence received through February 6, 2020 regarding the project. I move that the Board authorize the administration, its architects, and Solicitor's Office to proceed with the submission of the project materials to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for a necessary review and approval, and to take all of the steps required for public bidding of the project and for PlanCon as appropriate.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like the motion carries.
All right, is any other Old Business? Okay, we'll move forward to New Business. I think you have something on the New Business, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a resolution calling for charter school funding reform. Whereas the average Pennsylvania school district spends millions of dollars in taxpayer money annually in mandatory payments to brick and mortar and cyber charter schools, and these payments are calculated in a manner which requires districts to send more money to charter schools than is needed to operate their programs and places a significant financial burden on districts, resources, and taxpayers. And whereas the current charter school funding formula was established in 1997 under the state's charter school law and has not been changed in the 22 years since it was first created. And the formula for regular education programs is unfair because it is based on a school district's expenditures and not what it actually costs to educate a child in the charter school. And whereas the calculation for charter special education tuition is unfair because it also it is also based on the special education expenditures of the school district rather than the charter school. And although the General Assembly revised the special education funding formula in 2014 to more accurately target special education resources for students identified with high, medium, and low needs, the formula was applied only to school districts and not to charter schools. And whereas because the tuition rate calculation are based on the school district's expenses, they create wide discrepancies in the amount of tuition paid by different districts for the same charter school education and result in drastic overpayments to charter schools. And these discrepancies in tuition rates for regular education students can vary by almost $13,000 per student and by $39,000 for special education students. And whereas the latest data from the PA Department of Education, PDE, shows that in 2017 to 2018 total charter school tuition payments, cyber and brick and mortar, were more than $1.8 billion with $519 million of that total paid by districts for tuition to cyber charter schools. And whereas further analysis of PDE data shows that in 2014-2015, school districts paid charter schools more than $100 million for special education services in excess of what charter schools reported spending on special education. And whereas the cost of charter schools for district for school districts continue to grow significantly each year and on a statewide basis are the most identified source of pressure on school district budgets, and whereas the need for a significant charter school funding reform is urgent and school districts are struggling to keep up with growing charter costs and are forced to raise taxes and cut staffing, programs, and services for their own students in order to pay millions of dollars to charter schools. Now, therefore be resolved that the Upper Darby School Board calls upon the General Assembly to meaningfully revise the existing flawed charter school funding systems for regular and special education to ensure that school districts and taxpayers are no longer overpaying these schools or reimbursing for costs the charter schools do not incur. We, along with the Pennsylvania School Board Association, are advocating for substantial change. Adopted this day, this 11th day of February 2020. I move for its adoption.
Second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We are now at the time for the public hearing. Seeing that no speaker signed in, is there a motion for adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
All right, all by agreement by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Meeting adjourned.